Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Koch. This is the meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. We'll, I'll do some opening announcements and all that stuff, but first we'll open the meeting with that call to order and then everyone please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation indivisible.
Liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Thank you all. A few announcements, as cumbersome as clumsy as this is, everybody please bear with me. First announcement I always make is that I share everybody's dissatisfaction at remote meetings, certainly by this method where there's such a limited access to a visual medium. This is unsatisfying and cumbersome for everybody, so I share that. It is, however, the way that we are going to be conducting business for the foreseeable future, so I've had to get right. Number two, this is a public meeting. Not only is it being broadcast, but it is being recorded. I need to make that announcement because we have wiretap laws or something like that we wouldn't want to get into. So this is, if anybody's on a telephone, this is being recorded. Item, please, everybody mute ourselves when we are not speaking. That is star six. You can certainly do the mechanical mute on anybody's phone. Star six is a Google mute. It's just putting that papers near the microphone or clicks from our keyboard or breathing, certainly when there are more than four, three or four people, all those add up and are very distracting, make it hard for the meeting to continue audibly. Number four is when we are speaking, would we please approach the microphone, whatever phone device we are using, please get close to the microphone so that we can hear folks as clearly as possible. And I think that's it. Sometimes Jen reminds me what I forget. If I've forgotten anything, Jen, please don't hesitate, just shout it out. We are not in person, therefore why we'll use metaphors like looking up and down the table. That is a cue for anybody on the board to jump right in. I'll do a seeing none and hearing none to kind of move on to the next phase of things if there are no comments, but why we'll certainly give folks ample opportunities to jump right in, particularly since there's oftentimes a pause, which we mean to say and then getting the mute or shout. I think that's it. Looking up and down the table, anything from Jen Battersby or anything from the board that I missed? If not, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Excuse me, Paul, can you read the supplemental legal notice?
Oh Jen, thank you. I'm glad you are here. Another one, everybody. Strap in, it takes a minute or two to get through this. It's about 12 or 15 single-spaced lines here, so I'll be quick. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's July 2nd, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to North Andover GovCam Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online, www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. That's J, B as in boy, A, T, T, those are T's as in Tom, E, R, S as in Sam, B as in boy, Y, jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. I will repeat that later on. Any question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. A copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. So that ends the Governor Baker's kind of thing to what's going on, but I will repeat more slowly. Any questions that folks have that come up, so folks from the gallery, folks from the public, obviously the applicant and their attorneys, if they have any, are going to be on the line. But if you're a member of the community and wish to add something, please email it to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. J as in Jen, B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y at northandoverma.gov. That's N-O-R-T-H-A-N-D-O-V-E-R-M-A dot gov. So Jen, thank you very much for that reminder. I was definitely going to blow past that. So again, figuratively, looking up and down the table, anything from anybody else? If not, then I will move to the second item on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of December 8th, 2020, and for that, we will need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from December 8th. Is that what it is?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kuscha. Is there a second?
I will second.
But I'll take that.
Alexandria or Ron?
You were noisy, Alexandria, so you get the second. I will. Again, this is another painful piece of procedure due to COVID. I'm going to need to call the roll on everything rather than just do ayes and nays. So I will go up the full membership roster since we are all here. Again, this is a vote to accept the minutes of December 8th, 2020. Start with you, Mr. Fagan.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Kuscha.
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre.
Yep.
And I am an aye, so we have a unanimous vote to accept the minutes. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing of 281 Middlesex Street. Just as a reminder to everybody, please mute yourselves if you are not speaking, and if you are the one speaking, approach your microphone best you can, and with that, I'll say, who is here for 281 Middlesex Street from the applicant?
I'm here, Attorney Rick Byers with Joseph and Frank Stewart.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Attorney Byers, why don't you tell us what, give us a summary of what went on last time and what has gone on since and what we're going to be doing tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After our last, well, two meetings ago, we redesigned the project and submitted new plans. To just go over exactly what we're doing or trying to do here, this is a very large property. It's 3,800 square foot property. Currently used as a, it's a single-family house. And what we're attempting to do is convert it to a three-family via the special permit. The, along with that, build a garage in the back of the property for tenants and residents of the property for, you know, we need six spaces, so we obviously, you know, we're not going to have a garage for every car or, you know, six-car garage. We did reduce the garage size from what was presented at the November meeting, and we're looking at four, a full four-stall garage. As far as access to the garage, we, like I said, redesigned, we're not touching any other properties. The access would have to be along the driveway, the existing driveway to the side of the property. And because of the shape of the property, we would have to, we would need a variance because of the width of the driveway to get to the, you know, for the access to the back. So what we did, like I said, submit a new plan and we moved the garage a little bit. We still would need a variance for the side of the garage. When I say the side of the garage, it's really facing the front of the property. And we'd be, we're 15 feet off of the line in the, you know, in the front, which is, if you're looking at the garage, it would be the left side of the garage. And then, like I said, the access, the driveway entrance is 19.5 feet. The stairs unfortunately, you know, encroach and we get down to 14.1 and the bylaw, we do need a 20-foot wide driveway with a three-foot buffer. So we are looking for the variance on the side. The other thing we did is totally redesigned the garage. We added some architectural details. There's a cupola, some lighting, some windows, and a front, like a door, an access door between the four bays in the middle. That was all submitted as well. I know there were some questions about the look of the last design, and they really went back to the drawing board and came up with something that I think is a little bit more appealing, I hope, to the board members.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. for that introduction and introduction to, actually, a recitation of where we were and an introduction of where we are today. This is one of those things where an applicant has actually approached the comments from the board. I'm not, I don't know necessarily that it's going to be, you know, a successful approach. It is, from my seat, I very much appreciate that the applicant has gone back to the drawing table and really taken a proper look to the, to the design and site here. Thanks for that. I'll, I'll open, if nobody else, I think a quick question that I have is just in looking at things, since I don't, my eyes don't necessarily capture scale extraordinarily well. But am I seeing that the old design was an accommodation for six cars, so three two-car garages? And what we have before us today is a reduction by about a third and gets us to four single-bay garages. Am I reading correctly?
That is correct.
All right. Then I'll shut up and look up and down the table. I'm sure there are others with questions. Thank, thank you for answering that threshold issue for me. Looking up and down the table.
Paul?
Mr. Kuscha, please, jump right in.
I'd like to start off this conversation with, I have problems, questions. The applicant is saying he wants a three-family building, if I heard him correctly. And I have a problem with the three, with the three-family building. I was up that property when they first applied for it, and I was there this afternoon. There were a number of two-family properties there, and I would have no problem with putting a two-family property there, go, excuse me, going from a single to a two-family. Okay, because we're forgetting that it is an existing single-family home right now, and he's looking to add additional units. I think the three-family would not be going with the neighborhood. However, my personal opinion, a two-family, I would have no problem because he's right next door, to the left of him is the two-family, and almost directly across the street of him, excuse, directly across the street from him is the two-family. However, I don't see any other three-family homes, with the exception of the variance that we granted for the corner building that already had existing multi-units. So before we get going with parking places, I think we should establish how many units we are going to allow on this particular property. That should be question number one.
Thank you, Mr. Kuscha. Mr. Byers, if we could, could we get some, some thoughts from you on Mr. Kuscha's question?
Yes, actually, I'm going to let Frank Stewart, who lives in the neighborhood, owns a number of multifamilies in the neighborhood. He can tell you, like, house to house, how many two and three and four families, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, more than ever.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for taking my questions and what have you, but, so, we own five, four families right within that Marblehead Street block between Middlesex and Union Street. Right next door, you just approved a four unit. So currently, what we have right now is a 3,800 square foot property. The existing structure, about 100 years old, has an upstairs and downstairs. In the 1970s, they put on a large addition off the backside, which, one is a two-bedroom apartment, and then they had a built-in swimming pool down in the lower level. So right now, you have a 1,300 square foot area that has 12-foot ceilings, which would make a beautiful apartment. Now, the town is short on rental properties with the housing market as stringent as it is. We have a triple-sized lot here, it's a 15,000 square foot lot, give or take, I think 14, five and change. Right next door, you approved four units with a 5,000 square foot lot. We have more than ample parking. We have no butters against us. In this, like I said, we have five, four families in the neighborhood. We've been there for 55 years with a stellar track record of providing high-quality housing, and we're just looking to continue. Now, my son is trying to get into the real estate business, as I've been in the real estate business, and my father's been in the real estate business. He's owner-occupied. Currently, he just got married about a year ago. He's looking to start a family, and this is a perfect project for him to, to just provide some additional housing and just continue in the business. I, I don't think we're asking for anything exorbitant, and again, we've approached every single butter that is relevant to the project, and nobody's against the project. They know what we've done over the last 55 years. We have a great reputation, high-quality, affordable housing. Ask anybody who knows the neighborhood. I don't think it's out of place. You have a huge apartment over there, huge building. I think it would be three beautiful units over there that we can construct and just continue to do what we've been doing for 55 years.
I have a question on the units, and this is Steve Seidey. On the, so I heard reference to three units tonight, and as I look at the application, going back to the original discussion, it says, with the permit, it says, no more than five residential units. So my question is, I heard for three tonight, and, and there was five on the application, so what is the number now, three, or is five still on the docket?
Actually, I think this question might have come up before, and Paul Hutchins can answer this as well. I, I think the application, when you go up to, it's up to three units. So that's why the application is, is worded that way, but we were never looking for three, for more than three units. It was always, it was always three.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Steve, this, this is Paul. It's just the way that the ordinance is drafted, drafted not more than five, so that's the way the applicant has to apply. In, in our hands, we only have an application for three units, so it couldn't, so the applicant couldn't, like, pull a switcheroo and then all of a sudden do five if there were an approval tonight or tomorrow or next month. So it's just the way the ordinance is drafted.
Great. I'm learning.
Can I add one other item, as far as the two versus three? I mean, the, the three units are going to, you know, the good-sized units, 1,200 square feet, 1,200 square feet and 1,400 square feet. So, I mean, it's a very large house, 3,800 square feet total.
This is Alexandra.
Go ahead, Alexandria.
So I heard you mentioning varying, needing variances for the driveway since you changed the design going around the side of the house.
Yes.
That's not something on the original application.
Correct. Right, right, yeah.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna look up the table or over to my left to our chairman and question, do we need, not need a new application because this is going to be a full, we need new variance?
I'm sure Mr. Byers is at the ready with that one.
Well, I had spoken to the building department about that, and they said we didn't need a new application, just that we just need to submit new plans.
So we're able to approve a variance that's not actually in front of us on paper, in terms of an application versus plans? I guess I'm confused by that.
Yeah, that, that was, and I was, I was as well as Alexandria, and that's why I asked the building department how to, how to proceed, and, because I wasn't sure as well. I thought, I wasn't sure, and, you know, I have experience on the board, if we needed a new application or not, and when I was told we didn't, we just submitted the redesign.
Okay. I'm not sure I want to volunteer myself, but I feel like that has to be looked into more because I'm not sure how a decision's written for a variance that was never actually put in front of us. I mean, I understand the plans are in front of us, but the actual variance request isn't, so I sit here and say, how do I know what you're looking for, other than you telling me and me writing it down?
Right, well, and I remember even, you know, Paul asked me to, you know, submit the plan so he could see how many feet we would need as far as a variance. You know, I did ask for guidance on that as well, so, you know, we would have replied.
I think we might, we all might need a little more.
Right.
If, if, if I could say something, I have to back up Alexandria on this. I mean, this application is totally, totally different than the original application that was originally submitted. I mean, the entrance and the exit are on a different street, the size of the garages are different, the location of the garages are different, and I respect the building department, but all of the neighbors, when they were informed of the original application, they were thinking the entrance and the exit were going to be on another street, and now it's on Middlesex Street. It's a totally, totally new application. The way I see it, I have to back up Alexandria with this. I'm sorry. And, and before we get on with the parking, in my opinion, we should see how many units are going to be allowed, because that's going to predicate how many parking spaces are going to be allowed. Okay, I mean, if we don't know how many units are going to be allowed, how can we say how many parking spaces are going to be allowed? So why don't we get back to the original argument of, is there going to be a two-family or a three-family? And Mr. Stewart, I firmly agree with you. You're backing up your son in this business venture, and I have to congratulate you. Your son is doing a wonderful thing. However, what happens in five years or 10 years, and I don't wish this on him, I don't wish this on him, what happens if he gets divorced and he sells the property? And he sells the property to somebody who is not as diligent as you are with rental property, and he sells it to somebody who was just in there to make a buck. Okay, and he doesn't care for the property like, like your family does. We have to look for the future of North Andover, not what's going on today.
Yeah, actually Frank would like to answer that, Al.
Answer it. So all, all I can say to that is, since 1965, we've been buying property on Marblehead Street. Not one of those properties has left the Stewart name, and as long as I'm alive, it's not going to leave. That's the intent. Pass it down through the generations. Allow them to run a business, a rental property business, and continue it to prosper and grow, and not for it to individually be sold. That's not the intent here, and it never will be. We have eight properties in the neighborhood, and not one of them has gone anywhere since we've obtained them.
Mr. Stewart, and you're 1,000% correct, and I have to commend your family for doing this, but how can we predict the future?
But, but Alan, you know, if it's a two-family, you don't know what's going to happen with a two-family or four-family.
Yeah, 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 but I have, because there's two families throughout the neighborhood. Okay, okay, so we're, so we're two-family, it's, it's in the neighborhood. A three-family, Frank, I'm sorry, for me, and I'm only one vote here. It's just not the neighborhood.
So I'm going to throw in just one additional comment here, that multiple neighbors have written in expressing their support, including ones that are directly adjacent to this project. And, and I feel like that that's a relevant point, because I, you know, everyone here who's on the board, like, knows our usual experiences that were bombarded with people who are against the project. And the, this is unusual in that the balance is in the other direction, that there are a number of nearby residents expressing support of the project. And so I, I understand Mr. Kuscha's point of view that there aren't many other three, three-apartment homes here, but that if the neighbors are approving of it, that assuages some of the concern over long-term, the, the long-term presence of it. I, I don't know.
Well, can I say something? Where are you getting the information that all of the neighbors approved this? Because in my package, it was, the only letter that was submitted was for the father approving the son's project. I, I, I received no literature from the neighbors saying that they approved this project.
Hold on, can I, can I throw in here for a second? Because I don't want there to be confusion for a second, because you're bringing up letters that we received. So I know one was emailed to us, which Alan, you might not have gotten. Another one came in our additional package, which is from a Mr. and Mrs. Alder Ross. Although they mentioned, and this is why I want to throw myself in here, they mentioned that the applicant had stated that they were going to do trees along the property line, address issues of drainage. I, one, want to make sure we have that information on the board because we can't address that if we don't have that part in front of us. Also, Mr. Stewart, you're Frank Stewart?
That is correct.
You also sent us an email in favor of this project.
That, that's my father who lives at 101 Marblehead Street. He's going on 84 years old. He's been Frank W., I'm the son Frank R.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the property is a single-family. Okay, so, the property is a single-family property?
Yes.
Single-family, so, and I'm playing dumb here, there's one family in there.
Well, yes, yeah, right now, yes, correct.
Okay, so then, Mr. Frank W. Stewart states that this property has been used as a two-family since the previous owner has added the rear addition in the nineteen seventies.
I'm not disputing that. That- that's correct, it has been.
Prior owner used it as a two-family, maybe not.
So is it set up? I guess I'm confused on the interior of it because it sounds as if it's- I mean, when- when I hear the property has been used as a two-family, that makes me think more in the present versus the past. But it sounds as if the property's already set up for a two-family setup, not just a single-family.
That is correct.
By the prior owner though, Alexandria. My- the prior owner had set it up as a two-family. It might have been the grandparents using one of the units. You know, I don't know the detail.
Well, I was just gonna say, these properties that stayed in the Stewart family, are we talking prior owners?
No, 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 the- the prior owner, not the Stewarts. The people they bought the house from, use it that way. But since they've been living there, it's only been Joseph and his wife living there. The rest of it is empty.
So then the part that was- the apartment is not being used at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, nobody lives in- so, Alexandria, let me- so there's the original house like on the street that you see? And then there's the addition in the back where there's like two units? And the only, uh, well, there would be hopefully two units. One of them is a big vacant room right now. Jo- Joseph and his wife are living in the back. And the front is all empty, it's all empty space. They ripped out- they- they kinda ripped out what was in there.
Okay, and in case I'm missing it- Okay, do we have something addressing drainage and trees being planted? I'm rummaging through my papers and I don't see anything so far about drainage or trees.
We didn't know that until they sent that. I didn't know if he made that- talked to the neighbor or the abutter about that. But we'll be- you know, we can condition anything and put it in a, you know, revise the plan or- or get more details. He can work that out with the abutter if we go forward.
Well, and I guess my- again, my concern comes down to, we make a decision, I'm not a hundred percent sure what these people were promised. Because all it's saying is, obviously plant some new trees along the property line and address the drainage. I don't- so what does that mean? I mean, I don't think we can say in a decision, applicant is to address all drainage issues.
Well, I didn't know there was dr- Joseph is here, is there drainage issues now? I didn't- so, okay, did they- Oh, they were concerned about drainage with the new structure.
But do we know about drainage?
He's- he's offering- he'd offer them- he'd offer to do a perimeter drain and to plant a row of arborvitae.
Okay, so I- I can go back to-
Yeah, yeah, and I- I- I didn't know he talked to them about that particular, um, concession. But yeah, whatever they- whatever they-
If we're gonna do something, I think we should do it right. Because I also know that every single application we look at, whether it's Franny's on the corner or this one, is looked at on its own, on its own merits, not compared to something that's been done five years ago. And I prefer not to do things half in the back. Is the best word I can think of. So I don't know if the chairman wants to address whether the drainage, the trees, and the variance, or if you want to continue with the application.
Well, I- that's- this is Paul, I'm not certain how much there is to be discussed on the spot. That's likely something that the applicant, I- I think if I'm hearing you right and I'm understanding things correctly and imposing my own kind of structure on things, that we would put over to the- the next meeting. And in the interim, have the applicant put some drawings together for where the arborvitae's are going and where the- what the perimeter drain, uh, the extent of the perimeter drain is.
Yeah, that's- that's not a problem. Like I said, we just, um, you know, with the conversation apparently he had with the neighbor about that and he'd be more than happy to have that added to the plan.
Well, can I add my comment? This is Ellen.
I- I hope you do.
So, you know me with the little, you know, I like my cross my t's, dot my i's. So I do have an issue with the added variance that hasn't been advertised. Again, because for- for me, it doesn't give a full sense of what is being presented for an- for an abutter looking at this, you know, and outside of looking in. You know, that this is very strange how we're doing it now and it's very uncomfortable. But for me, I've always been a stickler with details. So if we are gonna continue to the next meeting, I would like something to have, either something from someone saying that they didn't have to advertise or have them put it in again for advertisement, but I think that the public should be aware of the additional variance.
Thank you, Ellen.
Alright, so this is- this is Ron. Yeah, I- I'd be much more comfortable if this was redone so that we knew the scope of all the changes and just part of the record. Just a question, just make sure I'm comfortable with this. As I recall, the last time this was up, there was an easement that was being requested through a contested property. So I didn't see that, but I assume that has been designed out?
Yeah, so what it was before was they were having the driveway from the garage go over in a budding property. And there's a concurrent, from my understanding, legal dispute with allowing that to take place. So where they have redesigned, the legal issue is no longer of our concern.
Okay, but that's, going back to your earlier point, Alexandria, that's another kind of major factor in the changes here. So it was-
That is a huge thing that has changed. So I think because they've made it so the driveway is not going across that and not becoming, you know, a burden to that other property, the lawsuit can do whatever the lawsuit's gonna do.
Right, right. But again, you- you want this reflected in a revised application and I agree with it. Second question I have is, it was talked last time about parking heavy equipment back in that garage, is that still the plan?
No, not at all. No, it wasn't heavy equipment, it was just maybe a, like, a plow.
It would have been, this is Frank R. again, it would have been just my snow plow, where I take care of all the snow plowing on all eight properties in the neighborhood. It just would have been a place for me to park my plow that goes on my pickup truck. There's no heavy equipment at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Please do.
We still haven't addressed the issue, two units or three units, which would predicate the amount of parking spaces.
It would, and too, that- the question that's been percolating for me, Mr. Kuscha, thank you for resurfacing it. Attorney Byers, in the- in the package, there is a certified plot plan, which is a, you know, pretty limited snapshot of the, you know, the abutters at a minimum. I'm wondering if you and/or your client could kinda tick off, what do we have here? You know, is- on- on the plot plan, again, it's a small sample, it's the most immediate sample far as the, you know, single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family.
You wanna do it? No, no, he just wants- so, Mr. Chairman, you're just asking what the units, the abuttering units, how many units are in each abutting property?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll- I'll let, um, Joseph, you're doing it, okay.
Yes, and this is Joseph Stewart speaking. Going up Marblehead Street, we have one twenty-seven Marblehead, which is an approved four-family, one twenty-three Marblehead, which is a two-family, one nineteen Marblehead is a four-family, one thir- um, one eleven Marblehead Street is a four-family, one oh seven Marblehead Street is a four-family. So right, so, um, and then across the street, there are additional two families. There's one additional four-family. And then on Middlesex Street, you know, I'm directly abutted by, you know, the four-families. I'm right next to a two-family at the corner of Harold Street and Marblehead is a three-family. So it's pretty mixed, but for the most part, I'm surrounded by four-families.
So I- I lost a little bit of track. I- I followed you completely on Marblehead Street. And then I think of, you know, on the- looking at the plot plan, on the left side of Marblehead Street. And then on the right-hand side of Marblehead Street, structures that do not appear on the plot plan, I heard you recite that there- there's at least a four-family and a two-family in the mix over there. And how about- how about across Middlesex Street? What- what do those look like?
Across Middlesex Street, we have two eighty-four Middlesex, which is a two-family. And there's also two ninety's. I believe it's two ninety-six Mar- uh, excuse me, Middlesex, sorry. So, two eighty-four Middlesex and two ninety-six Middlesex are both two-families. And then right next to me, two eighty-three Middlesex is a two-family. And then two ninety-one Middlesex is a two-family.
If I can throw my two cents in here, I congratulate him for him telling us how many units are on Marblehead Street. However, the address of his property is Middlesex Street. And as he stated, on Middlesex, on Middlesex Street, there were a mix of singles and twos, no fours.
Next door's a four.
No, well, um, up Middle- yep, sir, um, Mr. Kuscha-
The store was a pre-existing four that we gave a variance on for the- to benefit the neighborhood, okay? And that- and the- the corner building has a Marblehead address, not a Middlesex Street, Frank. Okay, let's talk- let's talk Middlesex Street. Okay, let's use the address, Middlesex Street, not Marblehead Street.
But it is on the corner of Marblehead and Middlesex.
I know where it is, Frank, I'm the- I'm the one who-
I know you do, and mind you, there was never a four-family ever. I know the history of it. I grew up, that was a funeral home prior to Franny, having it as hardware store and a penny candy store. I went there as a kid. My kids went there as kids. It was never a four-y.
And on Middlesex Street.
Well, Frank, 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 let's get into the argument of how the neighbors wanted to put two stores and two- at two stores and two apartments, okay? I felt the board voted in the right way in granting that variance, okay? But it was a pre-existing building, Frank.
Understood, Alan, and we were actually on-
Okay, it was pre-existing and it was for the benefit of the neighborhood, okay? Okay, it was pre-existing, Frank.
I- I agree and we were on board. We were fully in approval of that project regardless.
Right.
Frank, wait, Al, like Joseph wants to address some of the Middlesex Street properties.
And then, Mr. Kuscha, on Middlesex Street, there are additional three families. They're not shown on this map as Mr. Chairman mentions for me to point out, but I believe in the two hundred seventy Middlesex range, there is a three-family. I know I see three mailboxes on that home. So it's really a- it's really a mix. Middlesex Street does have three families.
I stood in front of that building today at four-thirty and I looked up and down the street. I didn't see any three families. I saw a number of twos, a number of singles. I didn't see any threes. And I stood in front of that property looking up and down. And anyone on the board is welcome to do what I did, okay? Okay, anybody on the board is welcome to do what I did. Go drive to the corner of Middlesex and Marblehead, stand in front of the property and tell me what you see.
So, how about just some clarity? As I look at the- the plot, let's go back to Middle- Middlesex, Joseph. As you were calling out numbers, I- I was not tracking with the- as I look at this plot, there's five different, so, starting with two seventy-four, which is, looks like it abuts Marblehead. Why don't we go from two seventy-four to the left and tell us the number of, uh, the occupation of, or the number of occupants in these different houses, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, I'm- I'm not exactly sure of the house numbers offhand, but I know at the corner of Beverly and Middlesex Street, so this is a Middlesex Street address, it is eight to eight.
Okay, maybe, not- not- okay, not to interrupt, but can someone help him with, okay, two seventy-four, two eighty, two eighty-four? I mean, you were- you were giving out numbers like two ninety-six and so on. So I just, I'm trying to follow Alan's point. And so I'm looking at these five properties. And yes, I did drive to and look at it physically too. But I would like to see, are there- are these one-family or are these more than one-family properties? So can someone help with the addresses that are on the plot that we've been provided?
Yeah, so I'm just pulling it up.
Um, are we talking about- are we talking about the plot that we got that's dated?
This is a new one, Alexandria. This is the one we just, uh, that came with the mailing that I got on Friday.
I mixed it all together that I couldn't even know half the time.
It's dated December sixteenth.
Uh, it is- it's dated October fifteenth, but it came on- it came with a new certified plot and then the new garage, uh, it has the new garage, uh, laid out as well.
Okay, well, what I've been doing while we've been talking, because I couldn't a hundred percent follow along, um, is I've been looking online at the, uh, pretty much the abutters list that you can access online. So what I'm finding, and I'll just go with it with you. So we have the applicant's property, which is a single-family.
Which is being used as a two. I put it to you, Alex, right?
I- I mean, I- I'm not in the house, but all I do know is that one of the people have said that it can be a two-family.
Right, okay.
So, if we go from the applicant's house towards Beverly Street, we have a two-family, a two-family, a one-family, and the property on the corner of Beverly and Middlesex, I believe, is a two-family. So, applicant's property, two-family, two-family, one-family, two-family.
Okay, what any others- what about the other side of the street?
I'm working on it. This is going through the abutters list and looking at property cards.
Okay.
Give me a little- give me a little bit here. Um, across the street, directly across the street, we have a- another two-family. Sorry, it's a butters list property card, then a one-family. So it looks like Middlesex Street, and I'm still going, is one and two families. Uh, another one-family across the street. A two-family. A one-family. And then the house on the corner of Middlesex and Marblehead is- Sorry, I'm working my computer hard tonight. Is a one-family. So this section of Middlesex, this section of Middlesex Street between Beverly and Marblehead is one and two-family residence, except for Franny's.
Which has a Marblehead ad- address.
Not to mention, again, just because that got approved as a four-family, doesn't mean anything for the future.
That's correct.
Um, so that is what you were looking at for the immediate neighborhood.
So Alex, can I ask you a question? Out of the houses, how many houses are there? And how many houses are quote, one and two families? Are there ten houses that consist of one and two-family buildings? I mean, add up the number of houses and add up the one and two families.
Well, I was hoping somebody else was starting to help me keep track here. It looks as though we have, what, five one fam- okay, including the applicant's, six one-families and five two-families? If I did that right?
Okay, Alex, would it be safe to assume that three-family would be the exception to the rule here?
In this neighborhood, it would be, uh, it would probably be this exception in- in this immediate neighborhood.
And that neighborhood, when you stand in front of that house and you look across the street, up the street and down the street, what do we see?
You're seeing, if you're going from- You're seeing, if you're going from Marblehead to Beverly, you're seeing one to two family homes.
Okay, and this house, if granted a three family variance, would be the exception to the rule? Am I right or wrong?
You're right, you're, you're.
Okay, I, I, well, it, you know, you know, it doesn't happen very often that I'm right, so I just want everyone to know that.
So, so take it, I, I understand that.
Can I, can I, can I interject one thing, Al, with that argument, though? This, this isn't a, if you look at the size of this house compared to these other houses, they couldn't be more than two family.
Um, that's, that's not, no, 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 I'm, I have to butt in here, because there's, I mean, you have to understand, your, the property you're talking about has had an addition, so if any, there's two properties, there's two properties. It's, uh, two ninety-six, I think it is, and two eighty, both have lots big enough that they could throw on an addition, um, like the applicant's current property, and then it would be big enough to be able to be, you know, a multi-family. So I don't think the ar.
Right, but I'm talking about, th- this one already has thirty-eight hundred square feet.
I, I understand that, but that's not.
Right, but, and Alex, you just, as you said, you take each applicant on its own, so if somebody afterwards came forward and tried to do it, uh, you know, then you could weigh the pros and cons of that one, you know, I'm just saying, this one has the, the, the square footage already, that's, that's the only point I was making.
And you're right, it has a square footage because of an addition, so I do not disagree with you, but it's not like it's the original construction, like some of these other houses, in their original construction, our single family, from the addition.
Right, well, no, I, I agree, I mean, and, and again, they didn't put the addition on, it was built back in the seventies, you know what I mean? So I've just, that's why they could, you know, they saw it as a potential for, you know, three families, it, it, you know, it's,
And.
You know, it is not a usual structure, but, yeah.
This neighborhood, this neighborhood, this neighborhood is six single families, including the applicant's property, and five two families.
Unless you count, if you, yeah, if you're not including all the, the multi-families on Marblehead, you're, I would agree, yes.
Well, we're talking the address being Middlesex Street, not the address being Marblehead Street, we're talking the address being Middlesex Street.
I mean, I guess the.
Well, it's around the corner, Al, but it's fine. It, it, I mean.
If I may, if I may, please, Alan, so if you're facing two eighty-one Middlesex Street, like you were at four thirty this afternoon, if you look in the backyard, there's three abutting four families, literally abutting this huge property here. So, you know, when you say you're only concentrating on Middlesex Street, this is within the block of Middlesex to Union Street, a direct abutters that literally abut this particular property, there's three four families, and we have five four families within this block, all abutting.
Frank, Frank, Frank. Frank, Frank. Frank, let me tell you something, I walked into the yard, I looked out at those, uh, garages that were in the backyard, okay, of, of the, of what, of the original intent, and I was nauseated, it looked like a construction site, Frank. Okay, okay, with those two four-star or two five-star garages, okay? And I said, this is supposed to be a residential area, and we have gar- all these garages in the backyard here, so let's not go there, Frank.
Alan, those garages have been there for a hundred years.
Okay, okay, but, oh, okay.
Those were the originals, the five-star garages behind one eleven, one thirteen, and one oh seven, one oh nine, are part of the original structures.
Right, but do, do we have to perpetuate something that's wrong? Okay, okay, we have to accept something that's there, Frank, we have to accept it because it was pre-existing, but do we have to perpetuate it and make it worse?
I don't know what you're talking about, a construction site, I think we own some of the best properties in town, I'm disputable.
Frank, this, Frank, no, no one is doubting, no one is doubting you being an excellent landlord, that has never been the question here, Frank.
I, I don't understand construction site, I just don't understand, Alan.
Well, well, Frank, walk in the back and see all the garages there, okay, okay, and if it doesn't look like, like an industrial playground, then, then I don't know what looks like an industrial playground, Frank.
Well, Alan, tho- those are for the tenants to park in, and they appreciate the parking, so if.
I understand, I understand, I'm talking about my visual, when I walked in that property, okay? And, and you're talking on Marblehead Street, a different address, Frank, it's a different address, okay?
Yes.
You're the one who brought up the abutting property, Frank, not me.
Yes, I did.
I wanted to stay on Middlesex Street, okay? When I stood in front of Middlesex Street, okay, and I looked across the street, up and down the street, all I saw was a mix of singles and twos. I didn't bring in Marblehead Street, you're the one who brought in Marble, you're the one who brought in Marblehead Street.
Were you looking at the gargantuan backyard behind two eighty-one Middlesex Street, that could be great open space for any of the abutting apartments? You know, if it's all about a garage, we'll work, we want to hear the board's feedback. But understand, you had a swimming pool that was put in there during the nineteen seventies, so you'll be huge space in the basement, three steps up to level ground. So twelve-foot ceilings, as you, as a, a landlord and somebody who's been into property for decades, what would you do with this extra space?
Well, 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 Frank, I'm looking at the neighborhood, I'm not looking at the structure, Frank, okay, I'm not looking at the structure.
I'm looking at the neighborhood too, we've been looking at it for fifty-five years.
I'm looking at the neighborhood, Frank, I'm only one, I'm, I'm looking at the neighborhood by one of my colleagues who's sitting on the board, who I think just said there were six single families and five two families.
There, there are three families on Middlesex Street, Alan, as well, I know we don't want to talk about the four family that literally abuts this property on the corner of Middlesex and Marblehead.
But, but, man, 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 Frank, uh, okay, anyways, Frank, I think we all know.
You were for that property, it was five thousand square feet, and you gave four units with zero parking, zero setbacks, zero side setbacks.
It was pre, it was pre-existing, Frank, Frank, it was a pre-existing property.
This is pre-existing too, sir.
No, right now it's a pre-existing single.
Yeah, well.
That's being used as a tool, okay, okay, that's the way I understand it.
Not, not by us, it was used for decades by the previous, but generations, not by us. We're here to do it right in front of the board, that's why we are here, Alan.
What does the building, what does the building permit say, what does the building assesses say, it's a single family home?
Yes, sir, it is, and that's why we're in front of you, for, for your guidance in how we can make this a multi-family.
And I have no problem being, I have no problem, a multi-family being a two family, Frank, to blend in with the neighborhood. The two family would blend in with the neighborhood, I have no problem with the two family blending in, however, the three would be the et cetera.
So it's, it's within the existing footprint, Alan.
Frank, Frank.
It's within the exi- we're not adding anything, it's within the existing footprint, if you have thirty-eight hundred square feet, why can't we make an extra beautiful apartment, we have all off-street parking?
And I can, I can add in on this, because we have, we've had issues, um, with other applications where, because I understand what you're saying, and I get your position, and I think there's, there's a viewpoint when you're the one wanting to do something based off of a financial aspect, of based off making something look more aesthetically pleasing, and the viewpoint and position when we're sitting on a board, where we don't have any kind of financial stake, or we don't look at the square footage that's available to be used. Um, so, there's that issue, but it's not just the fact that, I understand, you have this house, you're not adding to it, you're not changing to it, you're really not doing much in your viewpoint that changes the outside, or that changes the neighborhood, either.
Correct.
But, we, we look at it and we say, okay, so you have this property, but there's parking. And we have other applications where, and I bring this up because it's not just yours that we address this issue with. We go, okay, you're not changing the outside, you're not changing anything, but there's an issue with the parking, and the issue with the parking is big enough that it's not going to work. So, we look at yours, we look at the required parking, we look at the added traffic that goes into it, and that changes the neighborhood a bit. And I know you look at it as just parking, but it does change the neighborhood.
It's a difference of, but, if we did the, if they did two, so there would be four spaces, correct? So you're talking about two parking spaces?
It depends, uh.
It comes down to parking out, you know what I mean?
Um, except for Alan, Alan is the, the master on the parking in terms of bedrooms and parking required.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, yeah, but, yeah, it's, um.
Is it one per unit? Two per unit?
I want to say it's two per unit.
Two, two per unit, we have more than ap- understand it, it's a triple-sized lot there, so we have a tremendous amount of parking and open space.
Okay, well, hold on, let me, let me do my, let me do my math, because I'm looking at a, okay, I have no idea what units it is.
If you do one bedroom, it's a space and a half, but these are two bedrooms.
Okay, well, I got one thing where I'm seeing four bedrooms, what does that go with?
Each unit would have two bedrooms, that, you're looking at the existing, Alex, I think.
Oh, good lord, too many things. Okay, so if you're talking four units, and each one has two bedrooms?
Well, we're only talking three units. No, 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 it's three units.
Three units, and each one has two bedrooms, so isn't that?
Correct. Six spaces.
Why doesn't that sound right? Alan, you want to help over here?
No.
Do I?
Don't we have a building inspector?
Yes, you do, two pace, two spaces per two-bedroom, um, apartments.
Thank you, Paul.
That's what I thought, okay, yep, so, six spaces required for this, for this, um, for three, six spaces would be required, but four of those are going to be in a garage, so you need additional two outside.
Well, hold on, because only three cars are in a garage.
There's, uh, there's four bays.
Four in the garage and two outside.
Sorry, I've mixed all my old in with my new.
That's okay.
Okay, I mean, that's just what I look at when, in the sense of when Alan talks about, you know, that's one of the things that comes with making it a bigger unit, okay, four bays. So I, I, you know, you and Alan were kind of going at it, so, I just want to.
Alan's out of it, Alan has set his piece.
It's, it's a very, it's a very different viewpoint.
Alan has set his piece.
It's a very different viewpoint when you're obviously on one side of the table versus the other, and I, I do know for a lot of us that parking and increased traffic, you know, especially when you're looking at a, a neighborhood that, a neighborhood and I'm looking at the street that's predominantly one or two families. But again, I'm just one member on the board.
So, uh, this is Frank, I'm another member on the board. With all this discussion about parking spaces and whatnot, um, since the plan has changed, uh, I was wondering if you're going to resubmit or come back for the next hearing, if you could include a zoning table, just so that we can see everything, uh, spelled out and compared to what's proposed and what's required. And, um.
Well, can, yeah, um, if we're going to re-advertise and, um, I mean, it, and I, and I, and again, I've been, and some of you know I've been on both sides of the table as well, um, and it's hard, obviously, not to see people's faces and see where they're thinking. Um, I mean, well, well, you know, if, if Paul, if Paul Hutchins, if Paul thinks, you know, again, and I, I would, I did ask, and, and, uh, you know, we would have re-advertised, if we're going to re-advertise, you know, is there a sense of, of worth doing the re-advertising if we are not going to get anywhere as far as two or three family and the parking? Um, and I, and again, I don't, I, I know no one can actually say, uh, I think I, I know where some of you are leaning. Um, but as you know, to go re-advertise, it's going to be, you know, and, and re-notice, it's going to cost a lot of money, and, you know, we could be in the same situation next month or the month after that, not knowing, you know, two, three family, four spaces, six spaces. And I'm not asking.
I will say this.
Thank you, go ahead, Al.
Um, I, obviously, no one on the board can, you know, sit here and say this is where everyone's headed.
Right.
But I guess the bigger question is, is there's obviously resistance, for some, I'm not saying everybody, on a three family. So, the question just becomes is whether or not the applicant finds it to be worth it for a two family. Because I, I don't. I think there's, I think there's less argument and less, um, you know, advantages of a positive outcome, and this is just one person's mouth, on your three family.
You know, Mr. Byers, let me say this, you used the words earlier, that you have been on both sides of the table, and you are correct. You don't think you have a little bit of a flavor, a little bit of a taste, the way this is going right now?
Well, I, I, I know which way you're leaning, Al, you, you made that quite obvious, um, and I respect that, um, I'm not exactly sure how others are feeling right now, so.
So, take, take Alan out of the equation, take Alan out of the equation.
Oh, thank you, Alex, thank you, Alex.
No, I don't mean that at that, I don't mean that in the mean word.
No, I know, I know what you mean, I know what you mean, Al.
I understand, I understand.
All right, so, if you don't, if you don't mind, if I may, um, so you mentioned a two family. Again, we take what the board has to say, and we, I respect what the board has to say, if you're going to say, okay, you can go with the garage, we're going to allow the existing, uh, driveway to go in, if it's a two family, I, I think we're willing to concede. But.
I will say this, as a board member, I'm not thrilled about a huge garage. I understand there's other garages in the neighborhood, uh, that you can see from Middlesex or Marblehead or Mass Ave. Um, I think the two neighbors we have heard from haven't addressed the issue of a big huge garage in their backyard, which is where I go back.
Alec, 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 can I interrupt you? Are we putting the cart before the horse here?
No, 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 I'm, he asked a, a full-rounded question.
It sounds like we're putting the cart before the horse here.
No, 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 I, he asked a full-rounded question, and I'm giving him a full-rounded answer. In the aspect of, one of the board members had mentioned hearing positive or negative from a butters. And we've only heard from two, because, don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Stewart Senior is a little, you know, on one side on this, he's a little biased. Um, no one's mentioned anything about looking at their backyard and seeing this big huge garage. In the aspect of the garage, would I be keen of it as an abutter? No. But that's different i- in that aspect.
Alec, Alec.
The two or three families, I think, where you're on the fence.
Wait, but, Alex, can I ask my, tell me, can I ask, should it be, and I am not going to say, should it be reduced to a two family, and the size of the garage gets reduced, he probably will not need any variances to put the garage in. Yeah, this is bad, can I say something?
That's if he reduces, but that's if he reduces the garage.
Okay, well, he wouldn't need such a large garage. He, 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 he can reduce the size of the garage where the variances aren't needed.
Hold on, Alan, because let Paul talk.
Yeah, go with Paul.
Uh, that's exactly what I'm saying, he could take fifteen feet off his garage and not need to even talk to you guys on the garages at all, that's what I'm saying.
And that's if he wanted to reduce, but that's if he wanted to, he may not.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that's what is, is an option.
Yeah, and Paul, we did talk about, we did talk, if he turns the garage ninety degrees, face, so you drive straight into the garage. Uh, but if, can I just say one thing, Alex, too, as far as the, if we, if we go to the two units, he needs four spaces, he could put them all under the, in the garage, and, I mean, I, we used to be, like to promote cars in garages, like, you know what I mean?
And that's why I didn't sit here and say, and that's why I didn't sit here and say, reduce your garage if you were to reduce your, your unit, because I understand, and as a tenant, I'm sure I would love having a garage, I'm sure I would very much appreciate that if I was a tenant on one of your properties. Um, so I understand that, and again, I haven't heard anything from the two abutters, because a butters input does make a difference for me. I haven't heard anyone say, I'm going to look at a massive garage, I'm not happy.
Well, we, we don't.
So that's where I am on the garage.
We don't have a problem, we're talking fifteen feet, we can reposition the garage, so it's not even in the equation, it could be just built as of right. So, we don't have a problem with that, we hear you, and what you're saying massive, understand that we did reduce the size of the garage already, and we are willing to move it to fifteen feet, and, and turn it ninety degrees, now we have all our setbacks, and we're not having this conversation, that helps.
Not about the garage.
Correct.
Correct, now it becomes.
That's going, going from three to two units.
Now it becomes the driveway as a potential issue. And what's the board's feelings regarding that?
Although, I don't, um, wait, I, wait, well, actually, Paul, is Paul Hutchins, Paul, are you still there? Can I?
I'm here.
If you, if you go to four spaces, do you, is it eighteen, uh, what do you need, sixteen feet width, would still be considered a two-way driveway?
Still a two-way driveway. Still a two-way driveway. Still a driveway.
Oh, it's still a two-way driveway, yeah. Oh, no, but we wouldn't go to planning board, right, for site plan redo, or would we?
You still have to do it because you are creating, um, groundwater disturbance.
Okay. That's a, that's a change. Thank you, Paul.
And keep in mind, that was an issue on our end anyway, was the drainage issue and the trees issue was something on our board.
Right.
So, would, would the width of the driveway still be, I mean, that, so we would still need a variance just for the width of the driveway?
I believe you would.
Okay.
Mr. Byers?
Yeah, Mr.-
I have no problem with, I have no problem with the width of the driveway.
Thank you.
I have no problem.
Alan, you have-
This is Paul. It would, it would change it by two feet. Whatever, whatever they want to do with the driveway. Uh, the driveway's plenty wide enough to, for the, for two family. I have no problem with that. Whatever they want to do accommodates everything. There's plenty of land over there. And can I throw my two cents in? Is this a flood area that, is this a flood area that we have to be concerned about drainage? I mean, since when has Marblehead and Middlesex Street become a flood area, a flood zone, that we have to be concerned about drainage?
No, it's not under conservation.
All right.
Alan, you have just one of those, those comments that, uh, butters like to use, like, you know, parking, you know, traffic, drainage. It's just one of those catch-all phrases that, you know, I'm worried about.
Those phrases, and what I would offer is, um, you know, if the, if the, uh, uh, if the butter, not the butter, I'm sorry, if the applicant has already indicated a willingness to deal with some drainage issues, we're adding an awful lot of impervious surface, you know, based on just the footprint of the garage and then extending the driveway, uh, and, and spreading the driveway so that it can approach all four bays of the garage, assuming this is a two family with a four-car garage. Uh, so, uh, I, I would certainly back up anybody who says, "Wow, that, that's an awful lot of impervious surface being added. Let's, let's do some mitigation," and the, the applicant has already indicated a willingness. So, uh, to, to me, that feels, again, an issue that can butt-
And, and planning board will, again, on the site plan review, they'll take a look at that.
So, so I, I will offer, since we have a little bit of a quiet here, and the applicant is looking for a little bit of direction, and I certainly am not a person who would advocate for polling the, um, the, the members of the board, and I know that the members certainly wouldn't, uh, have much, much appetite for being polled, what I will offer, however, from my seat, is that reducing this from a three family to a two family, and reducing the garage in the ways that you have reorienting the garage in, in ways that I am imagining we're talking about here, makes an application like this a lot easier for me to, uh, consider positively. And with that, not necessarily looking for feedback from folks, um, but if we are, I, I get a sense that we are rolling to some kind of a terminus, whether it is a continuation or a vote, I'm going to look up and down the table and ask any other board members if they have, uh, thoughts or comments.
Well, I actually have a comment. So, if this is changed, the application is going to be changed from a three family to a two. What is the procedure of it? Is it a new application sent out, and the whole process goes over, because that does become costly to the applicant, or is it a modification of the application, or, I mean, how, how would you go about this, you know, procedure, you know, the procedure ways?
So, in, in the, the question that you're asking, we're going, that would be a change, that would be a, uh, you know, we were going from a higher intensive three family to a lower intensive two-family, uh, vein, and I don't have an expectation that there is a need to advertise relief that is being reduced. The requested relief is no longer the requested relief. It has now been reduced by, you know, some factor. The driveway is a, is a concern that I share with everybody, because that is actually increasing the amount of relief, because it's in, uh, you know, an entirely new, uh, variance being sought. I am far less clear on the addition of that, so I was hearing, uh, you know, the applicant indicate that he was going to be doing some legwork to make sure that we don't have to advertise that, or if we do, that we do advertise, uh, because the last thing I think an applicant wants is a decision from a board that is so readily impeachable or, you know, appealable. So, uh, the applicant is, um, well, uh, in, inspired, I guess, well motivated to ensure that that particular issue is buttoned up.
Can I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would, uh, again, uh, we could talk to the building department about this tomorrow and, and find out exactly what we need to do, um, you know. Yeah, it's a, it's still the same special department.
It's, it sounds like we're having some inertia, uh, you know, the reduction of relief here and out of some of the, the voices on the board. Um, while I, again, we are not polling the audience here, what, I mean, the board, we're not polling the board here, um, but for voices that have not been heard tonight, members of the board, or have not been heard loudly, it would be helpful, um, in guiding the discussion and perhaps, um, actions to hear opinions, thoughts, or concerns, because the applicant is going to be going off and modifying things or not. Um, we would give the applicant as much direction as we could. So, if anybody on the board has a sensation for an issue, um, that they want to amplify, or an issue that they want to introduce, then this is, um, a terrific opportunity and, um, that invitation.
Well, all right, so, gosh, I got my opportunity. That's great. Um, this is Ron, and, uh, I'm going to be the contrarian here, and we don't need to dwell on it, because I think I'm in the minority. A three family does not bother me at all. The outside of the structure does not change. Yes, the housing stock is a good size units. I am, uh, quite baffled by the objections to this, but obviously, I don't, you know, question anybody's firm opinions. So, I, I would not be opposed to this as a three. Uh, I do think it is absolutely fair to the applicant that they know what they're going to come back with, and I think, I'm, I'm not sure that a poll in the board isn't a bad idea, because it would be ashamed of them come back with something that was, you know, have an argument over it.
Thank, thank you, Ron. Anyone else?
Um, this is Alexandria. I can't stay quiet tonight. Um, the drainage and the trees, and then depending on what the building inspector, again, addressing the driveway. And that's really, I think, two families fit much more, um, in, in the neighborhood. And again, where I haven't heard any butters having an issue with the garage, I, I don't see a garage being an issue.
Uh, to, to be fair, this percolated for me earlier, we have not invited public comment tonight, but I, we will certainly do that before we take any action, whether it be to continue the vote. Uh, the comments will be certainly available at any continued hearing.
Has Jen gotten any email?
Well, we're, we're speaking with the board here, so I'm looking for comments, questions, or ideas from members of the board before we move on to the public.
Uh, Paul, this is Steve, and, uh, I am not opposed to the three family unit. I, so I'm, uh, as I look at the neighborhood and at the property, et cetera, um, I, I, I can go with three, I can go with two.
That's helpful. Thank you, Steve.
Uh, Paul, this is Frank. Um, I also am not opposed to the, uh, the three unit, but I won't be voting on this, though. That may not help him. Uh, I guess I, I, I don't view this neighborhood as limited to this one block of, uh, Middlesex Street. I see it as part of a larger neighborhood. So, um, in that, in that context, I think it fits in in size and, and unit count. Um, I was a little concerned when I heard them talking about, um, drainage and just putting in a perimeter drain, because unless we know more about the drainage, we don't know if the perimeter drain solves the problem or not. But apparently, that will be going through more detailed, uh, review with the planning board, so I guess I'm okay with that. Um, so, uh, so whether it's a three or a two, I'd, I'd be okay with it.
Thank, thank you, Frank. That's a helpful perspective. All right, well, that's, that, that seems to be the, the weight of the, the board having offered at least, you know, some verbalizations for thoughts there. Um, before I move on to the commenting, I, I can't look up and down the table and, and see if anybody is chomping at their microphone, so I, I apologize for the repetition of this, but I'm looking up and down the table to see if there is anybody else who has anything to say before we invite public comment. Going once, going twice. All right, I'm going to throw it to, hey, Jen, have you, uh, received anything tonight?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. I am just going to read, there was, there was one email that came in, uh, I think we, somewhere along the way, we promised our pledge or suggested we're going to be reading them into the record. I will read the email that we got today from, oh, boy, apology, uh, Amanda and Michael Cassali, two seventy-four Middlesex Street, North Dover, Massachusetts, writing an email, "Dear zoning board, we hope this email finds you well. As close by neighbors of two eighty-one Middlesex Street," parentheses, "across the street, we are writing to inform the zoning board that we are in full support of the project." Amplification by the writer, it's all underlined, "We are in full support of the project to convert this space to a three-family home and add a garage. We believe that the Stewart family has a good plan and adequate space for this project." So, thank you, um, Amanda and Michael Cassali. And Jen hasn't heard anything. That's the end of the public comment that I have. Um, it, it feels like we are moving to-
Excuse me, Paul?
Yeah.
I just, I just came through the email, um, from William DiAtimo. He's the attorney that represents Raymond Stewart.
He's Stewart.
Um, it's like a three paragraph, um, email. Um, so, it says, "As a reminder, I represent Raymond Stewart, who is related to the applicant and is involved in a lawsuit regarding ownership of an abutting property, um, at one eleven, one thirteen Marblehead Street. We previously sent information about the lawsuit, and I can provide more if requested. I would just like to go on the record that there are no issues relating to the soil conditions, shape, or to- topography of the land, or structures, and especially affecting fresh land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located, and therefore, as a matter of law, no variance is warranted. Applicants seem to suggest that shape, shape is the basis, but this is manifestly not the case. They already have a structure with inadequate frontage and setbacks, and are looking to add more. They are simply trying to cram more on, onto the property than is allowed. That is not adequate basis for a variance. The fact that there are other multifamily properties in the area also does not allow applicants to avoid the zoning bylaws. It does not meet the requirements of the R four district, and the proposed changes are less compliant than the existing usage. I believe that multifamily dwellings and apartments are not permitted in the R four district, and they now want to imperatively expand the pre-existing non-conforming use. We also agree that the application is materially different, and it's not necessarily clear that the neighbors know to what they are allegedly agreeing. It would be res- it should be resubmitted so everyone knows exactly what is going to happen. Thank you, William DiAtimo."
Thank you for reading that through, Jen. Um, I don't think it, at, at this stage, I don't think it's necessary to take that point by point, because we are in the middle of the application and not necessarily the end. Um, we do, actually, don't know if we're going to have a variance, and so soil shape and topography may not be, um, an issue for us. We are, we have spent most of our time tonight discussing the special permit for which that standard doesn't apply.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, with, with that, where I was heading before that last comment, and thank, thank you for writing in, um, all, all comments for members are always welcome. They are, I agree with the other members of the boards who have indicated how important they are, uh, how important it is to hear from the butters, from the folks in the neighborhood, however you define neighborhood, whether it be the, the block, or whether it be the street, we really like to hear from folks in the neighborhood, because they are most directly impacted. And then we take that information, we take those sensations, and we put them in, uh, you know, the sausage grinder and come up with a decision that talk, that hopefully weighs, uh, you know, the, the, that balances the various interests that we have going on in particular, um, application. So, I'm going to, I need to get off the soapbox here and just ask, hey, that looks like we're headed for a continuance. Hey, Jen, when is the next meeting of the board?
February ninth.
February ninth. So, with the attorney byers, is this the direction that we are headed to? Are we going to continue this thing, or are you looking to have a?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be, yeah, that'd be fine. We'll continue to, um, February ninth.
Okay. Th- thank you for that input. Looking up and down the board, are there any thoughts, uh, or, or objections to continuing to February ninth?
No objections.
No, I'm good.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Then let's, let it, seeing and hearing no objection, then anybody got a motion?
I make a motion to continue with the February ninth.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Motion made and seconded. I will call the roll. Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
I meant aye, so this matter is continued to February ninth. I'm going to thank, thank everybody for their, uh, their input and participation tonight. It's extraordinarily helpful. So, since we are continued, the next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of Three Great Pond Road. Do we have anybody from the applicant on the line tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Andrew Caffrey, Jr., for the applicant.
Terrific. Thank, thank you for, uh, for your patience and, and waiting for your, your turn on the dot here.
That was a lengthy hearing, but it was informational. Um, we also are in the process of redesigning, hoping to address some of the concerns that the board had at our earlier meeting regarding the two parking spaces it backed out onto Great Pond Road. Um, we had had one plan that had a driveway going around the building, but, uh, it brought in the, uh, wetlands area and conservation to such a degree that we have scrapped that. There is another concept plan that we're working on, and, uh, we're hoping to have that, uh, ready for the next meeting. So, we would request that our matter be continued also to the February nine meeting.
Uh, that is, that is sensible. Looking up and down the table, uh, any, any thoughts or objections to continuing this matter to February ninth?
No objections.
I make a motion to continue with the February ninth.
I love it. Thank, Mr. Kousha, is there a-
There's a second, Fagan.
Thank you, Ron. So, motion made and seconded. I will call the, oops, I will call the roll, but I've got to pick the roll back up. Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
I meant aye. We are continued to February ninth. Thank you, Attorney Caffrey.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we have a new public hearing, three oh three Chestnut Street. Do we have anybody from the, uh, the applicant here?
Yeah, Attorney, Attorney Rick Byers again.
Okay.
And Brian- Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is Alan Kousha.
Yes, sir.
I was, I was not present for the original application here, so I'd like to sit out on this thing, because I, uh, wasn't part of the first, uh, uh, decision.
That is, that is sensible. Thank you for pointing that out. Uh, Mr. Kousha, this, this is, however, to the, uh, to the extent, uh, it's helpful, this is a, um, a new application. So, although there is some history from the previous meeting, it is not, uh, you, I don't think that we are required, uh, to rehabilitate the record. We are pretty much starting afresh here, nonetheless.
Yeah, yeah, but it's on the same lot with, with a smaller house, with a bigger house. I, I would feel more comfortable with sitting out and letting the other m- the other members are more than capable of taking over for me.
That's un- understood and appreciated, Mr. Kousha. So, with, with that, maybe I'll throw, look, we haven't opened the hearing yet or anything, so this is all preliminary. Um, Jen, who, who is the, the associate member who would vote on this matter if it were to be voted tonight?
Frank.
Frank, okay. Thank you. So, what do we, I'm seeing a notice. So, is it a new public hearing, or this, or is this a, this is a modification, right?
Well, I can explain, Mr. Chairman. Um, we weren't sure, if you recall, I, uh, after we got our approval back in November, um, we decided, or, uh, there were a number of reasons, uh, Mr. Boyle wanted to build a different house, a smaller house on the same footprint. We weren't sure if we could do it as a modification to the, uh, granted- We weren't sure if we could do it as a modification to the granted variance. And I think we had a conversation where we decided, I think you said, well, you might as well just do a new application. So we're, it's actually a new application, but for the same variance that was granted in November. Is that correct, Brian?
No, no, that's not correct, because see, I'm, I'm not seeking relief for contiguous buildable area. So I don't want the ZBA thinking that all I'm trying to do here is build a smaller home. Because the way the decision was rented, was rendered, it referred to the actual house plans that, that were shown. You know, so it was not, the, the variance was about contiguous buildable area, not house size. But the decision, but the application included a set of, a full set of house plans. They get, that's tied up in the actual written vote and so when I, it looks like the only way that I could come back and, and do a different, do a different house is to come in front of this board.
Right, but, but it'll be for the, the same variance that was granted before, but just a different sized house, a smaller house.
That, that, that's correct, but I don't, but I don't wanna open up the discussion about contiguous buildable area, I guess is my point.
Understood, Mr. Boyle, I, I totally get it, what I'm struggling with, and, and we're not going to be opening that up. All we are, all this modification is doing is seeking to swap out one essential shortcut. Okay, the clumsy shortcut, shorthand version of this, just trying to swap out the plan. The relief has granted, just trying to get, just trying to put in a plan that shows, that reflects a house size reduction.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, but it, what happened, is if I could also, seeing how it's, you've had your back-to-back applicants here with continuance. After I submitted the plan to Jennifer in the post, the original person who wanted to build a house, an unresonant, a year ago, now has resurfaced. It's, it's a, the plan I have in front of the board here tonight is a 300 square foot house. Mr. Rossi wants to build a 3200 square foot, the footprint is almost identical, but it's not the exact plan that I have in front of you people tonight. So that's why I thought it would probably make sense for me to ask for a continuance and submit Rossi's plan for the next meeting.
Okay, that, that is sensible, what I'm struggling with, what I have not been able to actually get out to everybody, what I'm struggling is, we haven't opened a hearing. So you have, you have noticed, and discussing, but we haven't opened the hearing yet and part of it is, I don't know how to open this hearing, because as we've, I think we've all become acutely aware, we, the world doesn't know how to do modifications. So I guess what I would ask, we'll open this hearing in a, in a, in a clumsy way, I would ask, actually, the clerk has recused himself, so who is, Alexandria, you are nominated to be the acting clerk in this case. Would you kindly just, just read the, read the blurb in the agenda describing what the applicant is requesting?
I was just going to ask how you want me to do it without a legal notice.
I, you know what, you know what we could do? Ah, man.
And I don't have the original legal notice anymore.
Yeah. What, um-
I think reading the blurb would work.
But I wanna give it, I'd love to give it a little bit of the pomp and circumstance notices here, you know, the notices hereby given stuff, that the North Annover zoning boards will- Can you look at one of the other notices? I'm, I'm looking at 281 Middlesex Streets. Maybe read that first paragraph, then the blurb and supporting materials.
Uh, Paul, you're cutting out. Hold on, I'm looking for my legal notice. Okay, so you want me to do what part of the legal notice?
That's like the, the first paragraph, that says notices hereby given, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Read the blurb and then do the, the last paragraph of the notice, the application and supporting materials stuff.
Okay, do you want me to do the blurb from the actual agenda in the middle?
But, yes.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the North Annover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of- Sorry, I don't have the applicant's name.
Windflow.
Wind, the Windflow Realty Group LLC.
Ah, the Windbow Realty Group LLC for a property at 303 Chestnut Street, AKA Lot 1 Hillside Road in the- in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a modification of a previously approved variance pursuant to Town of North Annover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1A for continuous buildable area, CBA in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of reconstructing a single-family home on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA, meaning a relief variance of 5,718 square feet, i.e. 23%. The CBA proposed is 13,032 square feet, i.e. 52%. And the CBA required is 18,750 square feet, i.e. 75%. The modification being sought is to amend certain plans and exhibits to reflect the reconstruction of a smaller, single-family home. The previous approved home was approximately 5,535 square feet and the modified, single-family home is 3,100 square feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Annover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Thank you very much for patching that together and the, now we've officially opened the hearing and for clarification, this is not an application that is reopening the CBA, it has been granted already. Anything that you can take that way, can change the decision except for the modification requested by the applicant, which is essentially to swap out the plans. With, with that said, unless there is anything else, it sounds like we are looking for, actually, I'll look up and down the, the table. Any thoughts before we move to continue? All right, and I guess I will be for a motion to continue this matter to February 9th, is there a motion?
I will move to continue.
That was Ron?
That was.
Thank, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think, so motion made and seconded, I will call the roll. Ms. Killey?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
And I'm an aye as well, so we are continued to February 9th, as we wobble our way through a modification. Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
It's, so, am I, do I submit the, the new house plan and the new, like, map, you know, like the, located, that's, that's all I have to do?
I, I believe that's all we are looking for, yes, the application has been made and so if you're suggesting that there is actually a new, new plan, then if you would just get that to Jen and she will get it out to the, to the balance of the board.
I'll do that.
There, there is however, look, there are, let me, let's be, be clear so that we don't go all the way to February 11th or February 8th. Hey Jen, when do you need material submitted so that you can get them out to the board?
Sorry, um, January 29th.
January 29th. So get the, get the new plans to Jen by January 29th so that she can post, get them out.
Thank you.
If you can't make, I totally get it, we'll just put it over for the next month and I, Jen, do you need a, a time standards waiver?
Yes, I can send that out to him.
Brilliant. And I think that's everything, are continued to February 9th unless there's any other questions about the legislative- Seeing and hearing none. Done with that one, moving on to the last item on the agenda, the second to the last item, yes. Here, through election of officers. I'll introduce, introduce this by saying that ordinarily, this is an awfully pro forma exercise. In this case, however, it is, it is no secret that I am positioning to, at a minimum, not take my next appointment, which is, just my current term expires in June of 2022. I am expecting that I will not be reappointed and will go, I'm likely going to be finding another, another board position somewhere in town or elsewhere. So with that, we need to fill kind of, you know, whatever that means, we need somebody who wants to be chair, who is able to be chair. And I've had a handful of conversations with almost all of the board members. I have not spoken with Frank or Steve. But this is, this is certainly a vote of eight people, there are eight members on the board, everybody gets a vote, we've made sure of that. What I am seeking to do is to not drop the board on its head. And so the reasons for my telephone calls, which is something that I ordinarily do not do, because there's, there's not a politicking bone in my, in my body. I want the board to be organized in transition and so to that end, there's been a little bit of a plan developed that will make sure that we have officers and we are training, actively training officers. In the biggest picture of my mind, I wanted to install a, a procedure of automatic ascension on the board so that everybody, assuming you're around long enough, can cycle through, get a couple of years of experience to get the rhythms of the board, then find an officer position, which goes from secretary to vice to chair. Which in, in my estimation, keeps folks interested and keeps folks involved and makes sure that everybody has an appreciation for what the variety of roles actually do. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far, we haven't changed our, our rules in order to provide for that. We haven't necessarily had a lot of access for it because it comes up once a year, this time of year. So in talking with folks, the, the, and again, I am not shoving this down anybody's throat, this is, this is everybody's board. I'm just seeking to put a little shape to it so that it's not dropped down its head or left flat-footed. I've discussed staying, staying as chair for this year and train up somebody. So Ellen, Ellen has, last I spoke, very graciously agreed to step down from the vice role so that we could move somebody into the vice chair and actually exercise, you know, the vice chair in ways that we haven't in the past. For the next year or so, however long it takes, I would certainly be sharing the gavel with the vice chair over time, which air the duties of notice-making and revising and decision crafting and decision- but things that occur before and after the meetings, so that nobody has the abrupt experience that Ellen had so, so many years ago, where all of a sudden she was, one day she's a member, the next day she's a chair, looking around saying, what, what now? So in, in that vein, I would stay on as chair and Ron has agreed to assume the responsibilities of vice chair and get a comfort level with the gavel so that the board will have somebody with some experience the following year, you know, the year of my, whatever you call it, the, the end of my term. Again, nothing is said in, because somebody is vice chair doesn't necessarily make them, just because somebody is clerk doesn't necessarily make them vice chair. But those experiences absolutely help when the time comes for decisions and votes to be made. And Mr. Kuscha, who has been a bulwark of stability for us, is going to remain on as clerk for this year. That is my, that is my proposal, it is absolutely up for discussion, up for, I don't know that there's much energy for a, a debate. But we are going, we do need to vote on this, so it warrants discussion and with that, I'll-
Share your thoughts.
You know, as the acting vice chair, soon not to be, I just wanna share my thoughts on that as well. And being in a position of chair, being in position of an associate, being in position of a regular member and being in position of a vice. I think it's important that you have someone to show you the ropes, it's not an easy position. It's not a position that should be taken lightly as being chair, there's a lot of work behind the scenes. As, as well as for chair, I mean, you have to be a vice chair, you have to be on notice to run a meeting at any second, especially at these times. It's, it's, it's a very difficult position that is not, there's no recognition for saying, you did a great job going to technical review meetings and, you know, good for you, here's a pat on the back. So it's a very difficult, again, just to reiterate, it's a difficult position. And I'm hoping that with this transition, that it wouldn't be as hard as some of us have had it prior. And I agree with Paul, with, with vice, with the vice chair, chairing meetings just to get a taste of it and not being thrown into it. So with that said, I can bring up a motion of nominating, well, I can weigh for other people's opinions. So, I will, that's my two cents.
So tha- thank you, Ellen, and that opens the door for anybody else who has thoughts or opinions on this. We would love to be, for everybody to be heard tonight.
I have nothing to say, I think it's an excellent choice, I think you're doing the right thing.
Thank, thank you, Alan. I, you know what, I, I might even be a little bit more aggressive or offensive on this one, maybe I should just call on folks to make sure, because I, I don't want anybody to shrink from this. We can't, I, I can't look up and down the table and see, you know, smiles, I can't look up and down the table and see a frown, I can't look up and down the table, you know, and see a golf clap, I can't, we can't see any-
I'll spare you that a little bit, I'll, I'll add my here, here. I, I think that this, this sounds great. I'm going to be sorry to see you go when you go, Paul, but like, I, but I'm really glad that you're not just dropping it on us. So I, I, I think having planned successions is really important and, and I appreciate that.
So Mike, you're not gonna miss me? Just Paul? Just then?
I'm gonna miss you too, Ellen.
Okay, just curious, I'm giving up the position, I'm the only one giving up the position here, mind you.
Well-
I won't miss you, Ellen.
We will definitely miss you, Ellen.
So then-
Ellen, are you staying on the board but giving up the position or are you leaving the board as well?
I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
That's, that's the reason why I'm giving up the position. I would like to move this year, you know, downsize and I don't know where it's gonna take me. So it's not fair to me to have a position, an officer position, and then move in May, or, you know, that's not fair to the board. I mean, I, I've gave, I've given this board a lot of time and I would not ever do that to it, so. I, you know, I have a loyalty to the board.
If, if folks don't know, I think Ellen is approaching her 25th year on the board.
Thank you.
25 wonderful years, Ellen.
I've seen a lot, my problem is insurance, seen it all.
We've heard from Michael, I think we heard from Frank, Steve, any, any words of wisdom?
So, I tell ya, I, I learn, and the more that I learn, the more that I, that I learn that I, I don't know much. So, this is fascinating, I, I enjoy- So this is fascinating. I I enjoy it and I wish there I wish there was more of, I'm going to say, a a training path to how I could learn more sooner. I I participate in through the meetings and through listening is uh, I'm going to say it's kind of it's on the job training. So I if there is a way to learn more, I I'm 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 interested in it. But I feel like, wow, there's so much that I don't know and we deal with a lot of heavy duty stuff. So uh I enjoy it and 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 I and I always learn a lot every meeting.
Just so let's know, there are some um in normal times, there are some um training that the town does set up for us as a as land use boards and which are actually really good and and useful. And there's just a there's a packet of information that you can also receive on on the town website. Um, so if when times get back to, I guess, normal, we'll we'll set up um training sessions for you guys.
Yeah, I'm I'm all I'm all in favor and and I have gone to, I'd say, two or three offsite, you know, training sessions uh when they when they have been hosted in the past, different different training. I remember like the forty B and things like that. So thank you and uh I am interested in it. I am interested. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Else, Ms. Jacobs, I don't know that we've heard from you.
I think I'm a little insulted that you might go to another board. I mean, I might be, you know, that crazy stalker and just follow you to the next one.
I I somehow I I I don't think that you're a follower, Jacobs.
I'm not. I I am sad to hear it. It has always been fun to have you on the board, whether a member or chair. And I guess, you know, when the time comes, I'll wish you farewell. And Ellen, I I'm hoping Ellen gets a spare room wherever she moves to a nice beach. I'm thinking Hawaii, San Diego. Um, and, you know, opens the door whenever I need a vacation from my children. Which during COVID has increased.
You have to bring your little your little babies with you, so.
If you're babysitting for the week.
Yes, I am.
I'm just tell me when and where. That's all I got for you.
All right, thanks so much. Anybody else?
Ellen, just move somewhere where it is warm in the wintertime. That's all I suggest. Make sure it's warm.
I'm moving to Middlesex Street. No.
I understand there's an apartment for rent with parking. With parking with the garage.
That was funny.
Oh, I mean, I'm I make a couple of comments. It's like my name has been in play. Um, first, I want to kind of reiterate what Steve said, that um this could be a very daunting board to sit on. There's a lot that you learn and the more you learn, the more you realize you have to learn. And so um, you know, I I don't see ever that going away. Uh, just to relate, when Paul called me and asked if I aspire to anything, uh, I said, no, I don't. I I just because the town asked me to do it and it was a way I could help the town. And I'm willing to do whatever the board needs me to do to help the board. And if it was taking the vice chair role, uh, happy to do that, although it is rather intimidating, especially watching, you know, Ellen and Paul do this. And then um I said I was also willing to take a step back if we want to let one of the alternates take a full time seat. So I'm willing to go any way that would be helpful. So if um if I have been nominated for chair, I want to thank everybody who has not objected to that. Or the vice chair, I'm sorry, who has not objected to that. And if that is where I can best serve them, that is what I'm happy to do.
Thank you. Thank you for all of that, Andrew, willingness to do this, uh, Ron. Something you just you just raised an issue that um I I should have included as part of my introduction to the topic, uh, which is, we have a board of eight. We've we've made sure that our rules allow for the entire, all all eight members of the board to vote on this officers thing uh because I firmly believe and it and I believe that the rest of you believe that this is our board. It's it's not the board of the five air quotes full members. It's a board of eight eight persons who are trying to make decisions for the best of the town. When I um originally had ideas about officerships, I was intrigued by the thought of, well, we've got three associates. Perhaps one of the associates could be, you know, could be on an officer track, for heaven's sake, to in order to do any number of things. One is, we like fresh ideas. We like to train folks up and there are always always um new paths to. Uh, when I explored that with town council, it turns out that forty A, which is our our governing statute, our governing authority, um oddly, maybe not oddly, but crassly, it doesn't recognize associate members. And so therefore, the associate members aren't actually um qualified to be officers, uh, which is a minor disappointment on on my part, but nonetheless, I thought that I would share that so that the the balance of the board knows what I know. Um, that that I think that's part of my job is to inform folks. I'm not always informed, but at least on that one, I asked the question. So we don't we don't have to beat this beat this to death. I'm happy to talk as long as folks want. But if we want to get to the motion part, we can certainly get to the motion and wrap this up.
You know what? Since I'm going to be the la- the last officer position, I'd like to make a motion on this. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Paul as chair, Ron as vice, and Ellen as clerk for the office positions, offices positions for the fiscal, the calendar year twenty twenty one.
Thank you for that motion, Ellen. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Out a motion made, seconded by Ellen. Um, let's, I gotta call the roll, which means I gotta pull up the roll. I'll call the roll. Um, Frank.
Yes.
Michael.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Alexandria.
Aye.
Ellen.
Yes.
Ellen.
Aye.
And Paul. So we have, I'm I'm an I as well, so that makes a unanimous ballot. Thank you. Thank you all for uh your your thoughts, your 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 trust, your participation, your frankness, your uh your curiosity. All of those things I certainly appreciate in my role. I appreciate you in in trusting me with another year. And I look forward to more, even more than that, I look forward to sharing those expenses and responsibilities with uh with Ron. Hopefully, both of us don't get hit by a bus because then Ellen is.
Ellen is busy that night.
Ellen would be driving the bus.
Jen's gonna have to change the uh head, so.
I'm an amazing puppet master. Don't worry about it, Ellen. I got you.
Trust me, I do not drive buses. That will not happen.
Well, I I guess that's going to do it. So perhaps unless there is any last.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Paul, I got one one question.
Yeah.
If the associate members aren't recognized, then when uh uh like Ellen steps down, do doesn't someone have to be, I guess, appointed to that position?
Yep. Question. So when whenever a full member resigns, then generally speaking, an associate is promoted in the Board of Selectment. It's just it's just like a quick vote in a piece of paper and the next thing you know, an associate becomes a full member. In this case, actually unclear on who is next because it's my recollection that Steve and Michael were appointed. It could have been at the same meeting at the same time, so I'm I'm actually not sure how that works. So perhaps Ellen and I will have to hold hands and depart simultaneously so that uh Michael and Steve ascend simultaneously.
And just to let you know, my, you know, that that I'm not leaving right now. I mean, I still have a year and a half. I don't know where I'm gonna, you know, where I'm gonna hang my hat in a couple of months. I don't know if I'm gonna change my hat, so that's the whole thing, so I'm still here.
I, yep, I'm I'm not going anywhere either. Um, but we we are, I think, um, thoughtfully just planning planning for the planning for the future. Well, with that, with that, perhaps we should.
Look, I got a question for you still. I'm sorry to break up this party, but um I've got a question still on two eighty one Middlesex Street. I think this is going to have to be a full uh application because this variance was never presented to the neighbors or anything about the driveway.
That is correct.
So I'm a little worried about that. It never got advertised as the um because they were going to come in the other property. Um, so I I need your opinion on that so I can go forward with it myself.
Well, I think that my opinion is probably way less valuable than Suzanne's opinion. Um, but even more importantly than that, the applicant needs to be motivated to get it right. Because if if they're if they move forward without and uh, you know, without a a fully baked application, just just going to get appealed. So I'm my expectation is that Attorney Byers is going to dot every I and cross every T in order to ensure that if the decision is made uh on this matter, that it's going to be something that stands up. But I I would have I would have the same sentiment. I think that's what we were talking about at the meeting earlier, which is that procedurally, the relief is substantially different now that we're talking about a driveway. And so therefore, something needs to change and it's likely not that not just a mother may I on a yellow sticky.
I I thank you. Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Bet you.
I would have just said yes, but.
Uh, if if there are motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, Ron made the motion, I believe. Steve seconded all it. We're just going to do this a voice vote because I'm sick of saying everybody's name. Voice vote, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night.